Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 1st. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast via East Hampton Media. Tonight and every city council meeting can be watched on Charter Cable Channel 193 or streaming on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks as always to the East Hampton Media team for their assistance in broadcasting these meetings. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing application. Remote meetings are allowed during the COVID-19 pandemic as a result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, that relieves quorums of public bodies from their requirement to meet together in a public space. For those who are attending this meeting for public speak portion of the agenda, please remember that this is your turn to speak. We will not be commenting on anything that you feel you'd like to talk about. You will have three minutes. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting the Participants option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand. If you are dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Please remain on mute until called, at which point you can unmute and show your video. Before speaking, state your name and your street or town if it is not in East Hampton. This meeting will now be called to order. Barbara, could you please do the roll call?
Peg Coniff, here. Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
AP Gazinski?
Here.
Will Lynch? Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Dan.
Unmuted. Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zerrit?
Present.
Well, now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second for the minutes of June 17th. Any further discussion? Barb, should I do a meeting for both, or do you want me to do them separately?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm gonna do them separately in case there isn't one. June 17th, no further discussion. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Salem?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
AP Gazinski?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Could I please, motion passes. Could I please have a motion for the minutes of the 24th, June 24th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of June 24th. I don't know why I want it to be July. June 24th, 2020. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
AP Gazinski? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're now at the public speak portion. If you would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda, and in particular, if you're here to speak about the facial recognition, we'll have a separate time for you to speak on that. But if you have anything else you'd like to speak about, you can please raise your hand. Jean Francis, go ahead. Let me, there you go.
Sorry, Peggy, I want to talk about the facial recognition, so I don't need to talk now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anyone else who would like to speak on anything other than, okay. John Ferraro?
Trying.
There you go. Oh, you had it. Try it again. You need to unmute, John.
I got him.
There you go.
All right, perfect. My name's John Ferraro. I live on Melinda Lane. I work for the East Hampton Fire Department. First and foremost, I just wanted to thank the city council for approving our budget for our new contract last go around. It's greatly appreciated. And secondly, I just wanted to give my support for Mayor LaChapelle's recommendation for the new fire chief. He comes highly recommended by my peers in Northampton. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? I don't think I see anyone else. So, all right, we will continue on. We're a little early for the public hearings, so we will move on to communication from elected officials, boards, and committees. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Kyle Gagnon, do you want to speak before we close out public speak?
Yes, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kyle Gagnon. I'm also a member of the East Hampton Fire Department. I just want to kind of echo John's statements. We really support the appointment of the fire chief coming from Northampton. We're all very excited for the opportunity to work for that gentleman, and we just want to make sure you guys are all aware that the union body and all the members are for the mayor's appointment. Thank you for your time. Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, are there any communications from elected officials?
None for me.
Okay, oh, all right. Counselor Peak and then Counselor Derby?
Hi. Yeah, there was a whole thing I was glad to say at our last two meetings, and just because of all of the people, I didn't. And sort of in the interest of time, so now that we have a slightly less crazy meeting, I just wanted to take a minute. So, I sat through almost all of the budget hearings in the Finance Committee, and I really want to commend everyone on the city side and on the council side for how hard they worked on this stuff. But there was some things that I started noticing. It wasn't that anyone did anything wrong, but there were some conversations that weren't being had because that wasn't the appropriate time to have them, but that I realized weren't being had any other time in the year either. You know, so for instance, there were some very large items that didn't get a whole lot of discussion because they hadn't changed much from last year. A lot of the discussions that were had were about items that had gone up in their amount from the year before. There wasn't a lot of discussion about the big items that hadn't changed. There wasn't a lot of discussions about, well, why does that cost that much? Is there a way to do it cheaper? Is that even as much as you need? And the budget hearings wouldn't be the appropriate time to have those conversations, but I feel like we have to have those conversations somewhere. I feel like when it comes time for the budget, there are big questions that maybe need to be asked, and maybe that's not the appropriate time, but somewhere needs to be the appropriate time. You know, I think when we talk about sort of our long-run fiscal health as a city, there's conversations that maybe we're not having because, so, okay, in this year, we managed to balance the budget, but what does that mean in terms of like, over the next 20 years? You know, with the revenues that we have and the obligations that we have, do we really feel, how confident do we feel that we can actually meet everybody's needs? That's the sort of stuff that I sort of worry. You know, we need to find a venue that is an appropriate time to have those conversations. And it's not the budget hearings, and I just really need to stress that I'm not criticizing the folks who had those conversations, but I really would just challenge my colleagues to try and think about what isn't being said there that needs to be said somewhere and where would be a more appropriate time and place to have what I think are actually probably some kind of scary conversations that don't get had in the process of just comparing the previous year's budget to this one. So I've rambled long enough, but it's just something I want people to sort of, I don't even actually know where to go with this. I just think it's something we all need to think harder about.
Thanks, Tom. If you decide that this is something you want to have a broader conversation about, we probably need to get it on the agenda and maybe throw it over to the Finance Committee and have kind of a broader discussion, but I agree. I think it would be a good topic. Thanks, Tom. Salem?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to make a brief statement. I know that there was a short blurb that was put out that we were supposed to read before meetings about masks. And if I've missed it, forgive me, but I feel like it's important to say it because in Massachusetts, we're doing really well. But that does not mean that it's going to continue to go well. So that statement was regarding the use of masks and face coverings. So I just want to put it out there again that we're not out of this yet. And as a business owner, a city councilor, a teacher, I want to help get this under control, so I'm hoping everybody will do their part and be respectful to others because it's not necessarily about yourself. It's about other people. So I just wanted to put that out there again that we are not out of this. And if you're downtown, there's a good chance you're not going to be six feet away from people, and you should have a mask and you should wear a mask. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Great, thanks, Salem. I agree. Anyone else have any commentary around from elected officials? I just want to, for my communication, I just want to publicly announce that we're going to add two meetings to the summer calendar, which I know everyone is so very thrilled about. We're going to add July 15th as a city council meeting, and we're going to add August 19th as a city council meeting. The reason being that the pace of change in the city right now and with all of the swirl around COVID and reimbursements and how we're going to do things with the school and the budget and everything else, it just makes good sense. And since we are not under the challenge we typically have in the summer where we have a challenge of getting a quorum together because people are on vacations, sadly, not a lot of us will be going anywhere, so we're here and we will have a quorum. These will be designated, Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, these are designated as special city council meetings because they are not on the calendar. So the agenda may be slightly different than we typically have. We will try to keep them business-focused and keep things moving along. Depending upon the situation, we may or may not have public speak. We may or may not have council. I would like to not have public hearings during those meetings if we can possibly avoid it. But again, we'll see how things go and how the agenda shakes out. But right now, I just wanted to get that out there that we'll have two more meetings this summer that were not scheduled. Any other comments? It is slightly before 6:15, so why don't we go ahead and open the public hearings? Could I have a motion to open the public hearings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to open the public hearings, any further discussion? Barbara?
Was there a second on that? I didn't hear.
There was, Omar, Counselor Gomez.
Okay. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
AP Gazinski?
Aye.
Will Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yeah.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerrit?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez, I believe the public hearing tonight is regarding your item around ban on facial recognition surveillance technology, so I will turn it over to you to commence with the public hearing. You are on mute currently.
Thank you, Madam President. You're right, our public hearing is about this. Excuse me. First, I want to start saying thanks to Counselor Peak. Peak and I have been working with this for quite a bit, and it's always a pleasure to work with Counselor Peak. I want to say thank you to Javier Luengo, Emiliano Falcone, and Kate Croftford from ACLU, or the way that I call them, the LaACLU. Thank you for the chief of party. Since day one, he's been working with us really hard and the language going back and forward to make everybody's, make the good language, make everybody comfortable with the language in this ordinance. I really want to say thanks to everybody being involved. Now, why this ordinance is really important to have it in place here in East Hampton. Over a year ago, we passed a welcoming trust ordinance. Yes, trust ordinance. And this is basically a new extension for that ordinance. This technology is dangerous. It's not accurate, it's biased, it's discriminatory, and attempt to our privacy. This technology affects especially my community. When I say my community, it's the Latino and the Black community. It's not accurate and it's not good. I take this issue really personal because every time it affects my community, it affects me. I just want to make everybody to feel safe in our community, and I think making this ordinance and putting it in place in our city make this city safe for everybody. I please ask to our council to vote in favor of this ordinance and send a clear message to our city and to our residents that we are here to protect them, that we're here to protect everyone, and it doesn't matter of the color of the skin. Because here in East Hampton, we protect everybody, the brown community and the Black community. Thank you. I just, we have a few people here with us tonight that really know about this, and probably they want to talk a little bit about it. We have Javier, we have Emiliano, we have Kate, and I have to say thanks to the Vice President, Counselor Gomez, from Springfield that he's here tonight, that they want to speak about this ordinance.
You're muted, Peg.
No, I know, I know. Thank you, Dan. For those folks who are here to speak on behalf of the facial recognition, so the folks that Counselor Gomez just identified, if you would raise your hands, then I'd be happy to call on each of you to speak to this issue. Okay. Counselor Gomez, Counselor Adam Gomez. Go ahead. Let me, there you go.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
When you were speaking to Counselor Gomez, I thought you were speaking to me. I'm still in Zoom mode, and I appreciate my humblest thank you for the invitation here to East Hampton. Even though I'm virtually at home, I'm here in the city with you guys, and I just want to say, you know, I'm very humbled to take part in this hearing. I was one of the lead sponsors that filed this ordinance in the city of Springfield. And if you give me one moment, I'm actually on daddy duty at the same time. So if you hear something coming up, I have my three-year-old daughter with me, and I'm going to try to get through this as fast as possible. First and foremost, I just want to thank, in no relation, but I guess we call ourselves the distant cousins. I want to call my friend and amplify and thank him for filing this ordinance, Counselor Omar Gomez. Hold on, you have to wait, baby. Sorry. And also for co-sponsoring, Mr. Thomas, Counselor Thomas Peak. And the importance of this ordinance is what Mr. Omar Gomez spoke of. We were one of the ones that kind of filed first the welcoming cities ordinance. And essentially, and during these turbulent times, and I understand that, you know, we are per se masked up all over the state of Massachusetts where practices social distancing, and I know this type of technology, regardless of us having masks or not, is a sense of its inability to be accurate, right? And when you look at, you know, on the federal level and on the state level on how this infringes on civil liberties, it leaves, and it calls upon us as elected leaders to have to do that type of work to make sure at least that within our municipalities that we're protecting folks that are Black or Brown, undocumented. And then traditionally, that can end in, you know, one real thing is a financial burden to the city. If we misidentify someone and then inevitably end up in this big lawsuit, a lawsuit of that magnitude can tank a city, you know, depending on the extreme significance to that. I know that Mayor LaChapelle and also the Chief of Police are in favor of this ban to this facial surveillance. Also, in the city of Springfield, we negotiated ourselves with the mayor of Springfield and our police chief. We've moved forward and we've passed this in Springfield. And just to highlight other cities where we've passed this type of technologies has been Boston, Brockton, Somerville, and also your neighboring of Northampton. And people that don't really understand the dangers of facial technology is the fact that once facial technology, once we, when it comes to identity theft and they steal our faces, they can't reissue us our face back. And then essentially, when you're in, and where it became very interesting, and I'll close with this, is that a long time ago, when I first was elected, I created this initiative called the E3 in the Entertainment District, which we had an uptick of crime. And in our local pouring establishments, we started this initiative of working with a gentleman that started this type of technology to see how it would work so then we could know who were the troublemakers, right? And be proactive to the fact of who's going in and out of these places. And we wanted to figure out how we can, you know, if something was happening here, we can, you know, use their picture to identify them as a troublemaker and that we didn't want them in the certain district. And, excuse me, and then what inevitably happened, let's sound like that, it's hilarious. So inevitably, what ended up happening was when it came to people and patrons of a darker hue, it was misidentifying them at alarming numbers. And what ended up happening was some of those folks that were coming in, we couldn't identify them properly. So right there, and then this gentleman was working with a lot of technology folks from MIT, and he had to really stop using the technology. And from there, he came and spoke in favor of us having a ban. So then, once we can create a policy in favor of trying to work out when we have the right technology to use this, we can actually have that conversation. But until then, until this type of technology even exists, I think it's important for us to protect our civil liberties and be able to protect the residents of East Hampton and the rest of Western Massachusetts and its corridors. So thank you for the opportunity. Malani says bye. And you guys are definitely doing some great work up there. I commend you guys for all the work that you've done passing that budget and the work that you do in East Hampton for the rest of Western Massachusetts. I'm happy to be a part of your hearings. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez and Counselor Gomez. Thank you so much. Your daughter's adorable. I think we also had Javier Luengo? Let me see if, okay, very good. Go ahead, Javier.
Yeah, I cannot start my video, so I will do it just like this.
Okay.
First of all, thank you so much, President Coniff. Thank you so much to the city council for tackling this issue. It's important. We have talked a lot about this. We talk a lot about this with Counselor Rothschild and Counselor Derby and Counselor Gomez during the Public Safety Committee. This technology is absolutely unregulated in every single level of our nation, in the federal level and state level. As Counselor Adam Gomez stated, the rate of misidentification is alarming. A couple of days ago, the Detroit Police Department issued a statement where they say that this technology fails 96% of the time. So, you know, a police department from a big urban city stating that this fails 96% of the time. We also have a statement from the London Police Department in the UK. So this is across the board. And as Counselor Adam Gomez stated, this targets heavily people of color. And we have worked with the city council before, and the city council has never been shy of tackling important issues that we hope are covering at state level or national level, but sometimes there are not, and the city council has not looked in another direction, has been willing to tackle these issues, and I'm really grateful for it. I'm really grateful for the work that Counselor Peak and Counselor Gomez have done with this. This has been a beautiful educational process. Speaking on behalf also from Kate Crawford, our technology director, and Emiliano Falcone, our technology lawyer. They are going to be here. If there is any question, if there is anything that needs to be clarified, we are here to serve you, to support you. And thank you so much again to every single of you counselors for tackling this issue, and thanks for working with us.
Thank you, Javier. So I can't tell Counselor Gomez if there are others from your group that you wanted to speak. I only, it appears to me there's only public speak remaining. So if you're okay with that.
President, if I can interject again?
Oh, sure.
I can see the list, and I think those people are speaking in behalf of the ordinance.
That, yes, that I knew. I just didn't know if there were other people that Counselor Gomez wanted to speak first. So I'm totally fine with moving right into public speak if you're okay with that, Counselor Gomez.
I'm okay with that if I see the chief turning on the camera. Maybe he want to say something first before the public, and then we can allow everybody to talk.
Sure, that's totally fine. Where are you, Chief? I can't find the chief. He must be on page two. Okay, I don't know where you are, but Chief, if you would.
I'm here, Madam President.
And he would like to speak on this topic?
Yeah, I'll just speak briefly. I'd like to first thank Counselor Gomez and Peak for the opportunity to work together with them in the ACLU on this very important ordinance. This technology was discussed at great length at the IACP. As previously mentioned, it was a presentation by the London Police at our conference last year. And we, the chiefs, learned how unreliable and problematic this software is, particularly with the misidentification of persons of color. This is unacceptable to me and my department. And the chiefs and I discussed this topic with also strongly agreed with the problems and the unreliability. So I concur with all the previous comment and commentary. Very happy to support this ordinance, along with the entire East Hampton Police Department. And again, I'd like to just thank you for the opportunity to work with the council again, and of course, with the ACLU. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, did you have something you'd like to say as well?
Yes. So I just wanted to speak in favor of what is before us and certainly thank Counselor Gomez and Peak, as well as Counselor Gomez of Springfield. I was just very heartened to see the work across borders, something that affects Western Mass and really our state, and stepping up alongside Springfield was wonderful. And so I thank whoever brought that collaboration together. I believe it was Counselor Gomez. Also, to see the police chief and his team so readily work with the council. But most importantly, this technology puts us all at grave danger, and I think it erodes public trust. And I think it is safe to say that change only happens at the speed of trust. And I see this as a small step forward to build public trust between public safety and municipal government. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know Counselor Rothschild, you have your hand up. I'd like to, like, hold our debate on the topic until we have allowed the public to speak. There's not a lot of folks, and then we can begin our deliberation on the topic if you're okay with that. Okay, thank you. Jean Francis, you first had your hand up. I don't see it anymore, but do you want to speak first on this? If you're still there, Jean? Okay.
There, okay.
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead, Jean.
Okay. I'm trying to do the video thing. Oh, well.
Let me see if I can help you out there.
Okay.
It's all right.
I guess it doesn't matter.
No, you're fine, Jean. Go ahead.
Start my, okay, let's see if that works. Okay, good, there we go. Okay, well, first of all, I just want to thank the whole council because I was on the other night, the last city council meeting that you had when you went debating the fire department budget. Oh my gosh, you all are something else. Oh, my gosh, you all are something else. Thank you very much. I had no idea that you met until 2:00 in the morning. So thank you for that. But what we're talking about right now with the ban on this surveillance. I really want to say to Councilor Gomez and to Councilor Peak how much I really appreciate you bringing this before the council and before the city. And I really want to thank Javier from the ACLU for giving us so much information. And I mean, when he talked about education, I thought, oh, my gosh. I mean, I knew that this was out there, but I had no idea how much it was. So, but one thing I wanted to say, and I'm going to make my points from my fact sheets here, is that this surveillance particularly is racially biased against black women. And that what that will often do is they will think that the black woman is a man, or brown or black skin people, but they'll think that the black woman is a man, and then it therefore assesses black men as being aggressive even when they're neutral, even if they have mutual expressions. So that's one big thing, I think. So this, I'm going to read this. "This threatens to exacerbate the already serious problems of racial bias in our criminal justice system, where the police are prone to treat black men as hostile even when they are attempting to cooperate with the officer." So I just want to bring that up, that I think that's a very important piece of this, that it does say that black women are men, and then it starts that whole chain. So that's one big thing I wanted to bring out. But the other, another thing is I wanted to talk about from the fact sheet that I've got, thanks to Javier for the education around this, is how these companies, these aggressive companies so much aggress upon, you know, selling this technology, like Amazon or MIT, or what is it? These companies, the real IBM and Microsoft. And they have absolutely no reason to, they have no incentive to be protecting our privacy as private citizens. So I think that's an interesting piece of it, that these companies are so aggressive in doing that. The last thing I wanted to say is, I almost got nauseated when I was reading this, how I didn't even know that when I went to get my driver's license renewed a couple of years ago, that they actually took a picture of my biomed face so they could activate this at some point. So, and I think that from what I read too, that 70% of Massachusetts voters do not know that that could be happening. So I just want to say that, you know, I'm so glad that we're bringing this up in our town with all the problems that we've got. I really appreciate, again, so I'm definitely supporting the ban, and I hope that the council passes it. And thanks again, all of you for the work you do. That's it.
Thank you, Jean. Jason Montgomery. Let me, there you go.
Hi, I'm also having the same video issues, but let me see. My name is Jason Montgomery. I am an East Hampton resident. I live on 107 Ferry Street here in East Hampton. I am here to speak as well in support of the ban against facial recognition software. I would like to thank the city council, specifically Counselor Gomez and Counselor Peak for bringing this forward. I think it's vital. Like to thank the ACLU, the chief and the mayor also for supporting, you know, this ban against the software. As a proud member of the indigenous and Latinx population here in our town, I have to say that, you know, even if this software and even if this technology was 100% effective, it would still exacerbate underlying bias against our community. And it would infringe upon our civil rights to privacy. And so the idea that our city is stepping up and saying that we believe that everyone in our town has the right to privacy, has the right to civil protections under the law, is really heartening. And so, yeah, I mean, I want to echo what everyone else has already said, that, you know, this is a positive step in a direction towards ensuring that our city is the best and most welcoming community that it can be. So with that, I will thank everyone for their time and thank everyone for all their hard work. And the ACLU.
Thank you, Jason.
Hi, everybody. I'm not really related, man.
Ami, you have a very slow internet connection right now.
I live on 108th Street. You share, shut it down. Any better?
There, that sounds better. We'll give it a try.
My name is Ami Ross. I live on 108th Street. I, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's not, we can't hear you. It's cutting out a lot, unless I'm the only one who's.
Identify as a butch, dyke, working-class Jewish disabled woman. This is the only program open.
You're good. Now you're good.
Is it good?
Better.
Better? Is this thing on? Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Ami.
It's Jean Francis. All right, now that I've had my name said many times. I identify as working-class, dyke, butch, disabled-ish, Jewish, gendered on a regular basis. I am misgendered before the pandemic. Now with masks, even more than before because of my fat, physical body and gender presentation. But let's be honest, I have white privilege on my side and am much less dangerous than POC, Person of Color, or a QPOC, Queer Person of Color, in South Park, police. The problem can and are even more severe for transgender and non-binary, non-conforming people of color, because the surveillance software identifies two types of people with a 95% accuracy rate by configuration and trans, triangular, tri, how do you say And they are white women and white men without masks. The accuracy rate of identifying black folk is less than 35%, and in some cases, unable to see black faces at all. This is a huge potential cities facing probable lawsuits. It's some personal, on person's civil rights being denied and stripped. The research is showing that tech is very much a fixed monolithic binary model asserting that the gender binary is fixed and immutable. The sex recognition program only allows two sexual identities, male or female characteristics informed by human programmers. I want to break this down a little bit and a little simpler, with different street gender and sex and sexuality. Sex is what the doctors send you at birth. Gender presentation and expression is what is between your ears and how you present yourself in the world. Not everyone assigns sex and gender presentation a line. And this could create more problems for people if they're identified by technology that is so strict. In its binary identifiers, that it only allows for stringent male or female identifiers. This software fundamentally ignores the trans community, especially the black trans community, to a detriment with danger outcomes and with biases and problems that will arise for anyone. I ask that's the software my lack of education surrounding social studies, here and the chief and the entire city council for the ban, and I thank you for this, and I'm proud of this, you know, to look at the larger picture of what communities really and truly what criminal activity looks like.
Thank you, Ami. That is, thank you very much. That kind of shows the challenges of the internet when we do remote broadcasting, but thank you very much for that. We got most of it. Thank you. If you want, Ami, if you want to email me your statement, I'd be happy to get it into the minutes. But we got most of it. We did. Thank you, Ami. Kat Freeman.
Okay, thank you. I think it doesn't let the.
Yeah, I have to give you permission or something, so go ahead. I think it'll ask you.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, my name's Kat Freeman. I live at 5 and 1/2 West Street in Precinct 1. And I want to start by thanking Councilors Gomez and Peak for sponsoring this and for all their work on the issue. And I also want to thank the whole city council for approving this proposal. There are many reasons to support a moratorium on facial recognition software. For one, it's a completely unregulated market, as you've been hearing, and according to Detroit Police Chief James Craig, 96% of the time, the software doesn't work. Most importantly, though, facial recognition software is racist and misidentifies black and brown people at least 35% of the time. This puts black people and other people of color at increased harm of risk and death. Facial recognition software violates our right to privacy and does not make us safer. I know East Hampton can be a city that values racial justice and the rights of its citizens, and I know East Hampton can be a leader in the state of Massachusetts in standing against facial recognition software. So thank you all for your work, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Kat.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Kate Nadell. I live in District 2 on Ferry Street in East Hampton. I recently moved here, but I've lived in Western Massachusetts for a long time now. I wanted to just add my support for passing this ordinance to ban facial recognition surveillance technology tonight at the city council meeting. It sounds like there's overwhelming support for this ordinance, which I think is really great, particularly given this moment in history. I think that it is important to note that in other cities, such as New York City, where I'm originally from, there are huge concerns about tech companies selling facial recognition tech to the New York Police Department, as well as tech companies developing systems which collect data from drones, cameras, and environmental sensors, and selling these kinds of systems to the police departments to then be used to surveil communities who are not aware that they're being constantly monitored and watched. There are also serious issues even in North Hampton around the police department using a database called CopLink, which ICE and Homeland Security are able to access despite North Hampton calling itself a sanctuary city. I'm unclear if East Hampton uses this database, but it's something that I'm particularly interested in looking into. And I just, I bring up New York City and North Hampton up tonight only to highlight that this fight for data privacy and the freedom from being surveilled in our own cities is something that I think we all should really be concerned with and continue to be concerned with, even if it's not actively happening within our neighborhood in East Hampton. We should be adamant that spying on people is wrong, that coercive and insidious data collection of our neighbors is dangerous, and that advanced technological tools, systems, and databases like CopLink in the hands of any police department really does not equal public safety and can seriously threaten the lives of the most marginalized people in our communities, as other people have spoken to. But I'm really proud of the work that the East Hampton City Council has done on this, and I'm really proud of the East Hampton City Council for considering and I hope passing this ordinance tonight. And I really look forward to continuing to think about these issues and working with you all. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Kate. Amber Black.
Hi, thank you.
Wait, wait, I messed up. Go ahead.
Okay. Amber Black, I live on East Street. I am here to speak in support of the ordinance banning the use of facial surveillance technology in our city. For 20 years, I've worked for an organization that aids people who are targeted, who are wrongfully targeted, who have had their civil liberties and civil rights attacked. And I've seen all the harm and destruction that that causes to people's lives. I also have Latinx family members and brown and black friends, and this technology is particularly dangerous for those folks, and that troubles me tremendously. I want to thank Councilors Gomez and Peak for bringing this ordinance forward and supporting it. I want to thank our police chief and mayor for supporting it. And I just want to say that I have faith that this council is going to pass this ban, and I'm going to be proud of you when you do, and I'm going to feel safer in this community and be proud of our city for leading the way on this important, important public safety measure. So thank you in advance for your vote in support of banning this technology.
You're muted, Peak.
It's good that I get so much help here. What would I do without you all? So I don't see anyone else who has their.
Miranda Groh.
I'm sorry, Dan, what? I'm sorry.
There's a person, Miranda Groh and Matt.
Okay.
Have their hands up. I don't know.
Go ahead, Miranda. Apparently you're on page two.
Hi, yes, there's two of us in the same household, so we'd both like to speak if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Great. Do you want to go first?
Sure. Hi, everyone. So my name is Matt Frelinger. I live on the Plant Circle in East Hampton, and I'm here tonight, as with everyone, just to support the moratorium on facial recognition technology. So as everyone said, you know, just to echo them, we know that this technology as it exists is inaccurate, dangerously inaccurate, and especially inaccurate when we're, you know, it's being used on people of color. And so I think it's clear that we need to act now to prevent the software from being used in our community. I'm extremely grateful to live in a town where the city council, especially Councilors Peak and Gomez, have listened to the community and to the experts from the ACLU and have taken a stand on this issue. And furthermore, I'm really grateful that the police chief and the mayor are on the same page as well. So I see no reason why this shouldn't pass with flying colors. Yeah, I just want to talk really briefly about, you know, so a bunch of us have shirts that say "Press Pause" because this is a moratorium, because the technology is flawed now, but in the future, it could work perfectly. And even if it did, I don't think that it would make us safer. You know, so even if it was perfect, if it identified someone correctly 100% of the time, that would just be an invasion of our privacy anytime we went out into public. You know, that would give the ability to track people, who they meet with, what businesses they go to. And I think that would be a huge threat to our First Amendment right to assemble, and it's just not something that would make us safer. So again, I just want to thank everyone here for your time, for your work on this, especially the ACLU and Councilors Gomez and Peak. And Miranda.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Miranda Groh. I also live on the Plant Circle, and I'm also here to speak in favor of the moratorium on face surveillance. And I'll just say right off the bat, I agree with everything that has been said so far, and I would like to thank so much the council for bringing this forward, and especially thank Counselor Gomez and Counselor Peak for bringing such an important issue before us tonight. I work in North Hampton at the Resistance Center for Peace and Justice, and I've gotten the opportunity to work with folks from the ACLU of Massachusetts and really learn from.
Personally, I have family members close to me who are battling addiction. I feel it's already hard enough to come forward and work towards recovery. Um, folks have pointed out that the anonymous aspect of these recovery meetings would completely disappear with this technology encroaching on our communities. Additionally, I have many close friends and family members who are attending protests, Black Lives Matter protests lately, and I'm particularly worried for my friends of color as they may be identified and criminalized for using their First Amendment rights with this technology. Um, this technology just doesn't have a place in our society, certainly not in Massachusetts and not in East Hampton. I moved to East Hampton just about a year ago, and I've been so warmly welcomed into a community of care, and, um, I've had, I have neighbors here that have lived here most of their lives, and they've kind of attested for the fact that they really feel East Hampton, um, is getting like progressively better over time with passing the Welcoming Community Trust Act. Um, East Hampton has really been a leader in ensuring all of us feel safe, and I am hopeful that the council will continue to lead by passing this moratorium on face surveillance, um, tonight, joining Springfield, Northampton, Somerville, and most recently even Boston. Um, East Hampton has an opportunity to join these cities in fighting for our civil rights now more than ever. I think it's important that we're asking what kind of message our community wants to send to the state and to the country as, uh, the injustices surrounding face surveillance continue and as, um, issues of racial justice continue. I am, um, confident and proud to say that I think East Hampton can send the right message by passing the ban tonight and continue to stand up for racial justice. Uh, again, I just want to thank one more time everyone from the ACLU who's worked so hard on this, in addition to councillor Gomez and councillor Peak, and thanks again to the council.
Thank you, Miranda. Thanks, Matt. Okay. Um, let me get back to where we were.
I don't see anybody else, Peck.
Okay, good. So, um, so now, i- it's really, if any of the other councillors have questions of either, uh, councillor Gomez or any of the folks here, uh, go ahead and, and raise your hand. I saw councillor Peak, and then we'll come to you councillor Rist.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, say one thing about this, uh, that actually, uh, the last two speakers sort of touched on, but, um, just as the co-sponsor, a lot of why this is important to me. So, this technology right now is deeply flawed, and it has bias sort of cooked into the code, and it's really expensive. Our current mayor and our current police chief have no interest in it. So, I think a logical question that could come up in these deliberations is, well, then, if no one is interested in this, why pass a moratorium on it? And I want to just say why that's important to me. It's because in passing a moratorium, we ensure that if at any future point, let's just say that this technology becomes a lot better, a lot more accurate, a lot more affordable, if at some future point whoever is currently occupying those positions in the city wants to move forward with this, well, they're going to have to do an ordinance change to do it, which means that they're going to have to, um, come to the city council, and there's going to have to be a public hearing. I think that public hearing is maybe the most important thing, because this, if you think about what the, the, the potential for this technology could be, that there could actually be cameras scanning people's faces as they walk down the street, and then entering into a database who was where and when that could later be used in the case of, like, say, a crime, uh, was committed. You could say, well, who was in the area at that time? You, maybe you decide that's actually great, but you have to admit, that is a gigantic change in your everyday citizens' interaction with the, their government. People these days are not, right now accustomed to the concept that their whereabouts could be logged by cameras scanning their faces, but before very long, we could find ourselves in a place where most of the things, most of the sort of bias concerns that a lot of the speakers have, have been corrected. Technology moves at a very fast pace, and yet, a- and suddenly we have the option to do this. I think that the, the voters and the people of East Hampton, at such a juncture, if somebody decides that this is actually something that they want for law enforcement, law enforcement or for, for the schools or for public housing, for, for anything, if any aspect of the city wants to use something like this, they're going to have to come to the city council and make their case, and the citizens of East Hampton are going to get an opportunity to, um, to say how they feel about that. That, to me, is the most important thing about this, and is why I think this is so critical. So, thanks for that.
Thank you, councillor Peak. Councillor Rist?
Just a few comments. Uh, I want to thank councillors Gomez and Peak for enlightening me on this topic. I have been indoctrinated, unfortunately, by watching too many crime shows, and you watch it and you, you marvel at how incredibly accurate facial recognition is on those shows. And that's just the kind of social programming that we all face. Now, when you talk about systemic racism, facial recognition is a system. We must protect ourselves against this kind of technology, and if we want to begin to remove racism from systems in our society that are biased, this is one of them, and a great start. I also want to thank the ACLU, because I know how much Chinese citizens are surveilled constantly by their government, and without the ACLU, that could happen here. It cannot and should not ever happen, and I don't know when facial recognition will be that accurate. But boy, that debate had better be strong, and the people better be involved, and fortunately, we do have the freedom in this country and the democracy and groups like ACLU that will be out there to make sure that our privacy and our rights are protected. And I want to thank Bill Newman and the ACLU for continuing to do that. Um, we don't want to become China in many aspects that they do on their citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rist. Anyone else? Uh, councillor Rothschild.
Uh, thank you. Um, I was very happy to be in the Public Safety Committee where this was discussed and got to get, learn about facial recognition technology. Why I'm so excited about passing this is, in this time that where we are really faced with, you're either doing racist, you're either racist, or you're doing anti-racist work. To me, this is an example of an anti-racist policy where we're being proactive, um, in banning something that has implicit, that has bias built into it. Uh, makes me proud to be part of this community and proud of being part of East Hampton. I'm psyched that, um, that so many people came up and showed up at the Public Safety Committee, um, so many residents and spoke. This is how, this is how change happens. You know, we're all part-time councillors, but when, when po- when policy organizations like the ACLU that have been working on important policies like that come to us, come to councillor Gomez and Peak, and then they worked on it, worked with the chief of police here that was very collaborative in this process, and then we get to bring it here, and everyone's still showing up. This is, to me, an exciting part of city government, and I just want to thank my fellow councillors, thank the citizens for showing up, thank the ACLU, and I really hope this is just continuance of anti-racist policies that we put in in East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rothschild. Anyone else? Councillor Kuzinski.
I'd like to thank everyone for helping to educate me on the subject. I have always had a healthy lack of respect for the 1984 image of, uh, Big Brother watching you all the time. Uh, so, the thought of the government utilizing, uh, surveillance technology and then getting it wrong just doesn't make any sense, I think, for anyone, especially if persons of color are wrong more than white folks, and persons, women of color are misidentified more, according to the literature. Uh, that just doesn't make any sense at all for, for our community to endorse such a system. Uh, councillor Peak had said, well, well, why vote on it? I agree with you, councillor Peak, very strongly. It's very important that we send a message to the rest of Massachusetts, to the rest of the United States. This isn't for our communities at this time.
Thank you, councillor Kuzinski. Anyone else? All right. Uh, councillor Gomez, do you want to make a motion at this time?
Yes, thank you, President Coniff. Uh, first, I, I, I just want to say something really quick, um, for the clarification of stuff that I hear outside, um, if the police department get a picture of anyone, they have a, uh, make a robbery in one of our store, and we have a picture of that person, that doesn't mean that we cannot use that picture. Uh, we have some tools to use that pictures, and, and this is not about that. I just want to make that clear, because that concern came to me a few times. I just want to be clear with everybody that we can still, uh, use those, those kind of pictures to try to identify who's that person. Um, a- again, I have to say thanks to the mayor and thanks to the chief of party for this statement tonight, and to the vice president of, of, uh, of the Springfield City Council. I think they did a great job. Uh, thank you for them. Now, I want to make a motion, but first, I want to make a motion to amend, make an amendment, uh, in the language, because in a few, uh, places say facial, and it's the, I mean, say face, and instead of face, it should be facial, and section six, 22.3, uh, letter A suppression is, uh, every word that say face surveillance is supposed to be facial surveillance. So, I want to make an amendment for that. I want to make a motion to change the word from face surveillance to facial surveillance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, uh, to amend the proposed ordinance to replace the word face with facial. Uh, could I just ask councillor Gomez, do you have a sense as for the number of places in six twenty-two or beyond that it occurs, just so we get them all? I know there's one in the very first sentence under suppression.
Yes, is, is one there, is another one in section, uh, six twenty-two four, uh, and number one, number two, number, and number four. Number two, no, number, no, number three is fine, is number one, number two, number four, and number five.
Four. And... I, I see it. Got them? Okay. All right. Great. Um, so, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Barbara?
Um, I just want to say you, well, it's not really an amendment, because you haven't made the main motion yet.
Okay. Oh, should we do that first?
Yeah, we can. Maybe you can just make the correction. I've, I've got the correction.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we, we'll make a main motion now. Okay.
Yes, I just want to be sure, because, uh, at the definition, say facial, uh, facial surveillance, no face surveillance, and that's the reason we, we have to change it.
Yes. Yep. I would, I would just say it's a correction to...
Okay.
It's clear, it's in the order.
Okay, perfect. So, now, I want to make a motion for the proposal of, to amend chapter six, uh, miscellaneous offenses provision with the additional of new section six twenty-two, but on facial recognition surveillance technology.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add section six twenty-two ban on facial recognition surveillance technology to our ordinances. Any further discussion?
Councillor should make a motion to amend the motion? Now?
No, I, I, I think it's just a correction.
So, you don't think it needs an amendment, Barbara?
No, I'll just, I'll just...
Okay, thank you. I withdraw that. Thank you.
It's a grammatical kind of thing, so...
Okay.
Councillor Derby?
Uh, I don't know if it's been said yet, but I just want to let everybody know that this passed in committee three to zero.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, that was my mistake.
Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara? Oh, sorry, oh, hold on. Councillor Kuzinski?
I just wanted to add the city of Cambridge to the list that, uh, councillor Gomez of Springfield had, uh, not mentioned, did pass in Cambridge, Massachusetts.
Okay, great. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Lindsey.
Hi.
She looks frozen. Okay.
Oh, and Zara.
Hi.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Well done, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will take a mo...
Move the public hearing. You close.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearings. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Yes.
Oh, and Zara?
Yes.
Great. The public hearings are now closed. Um, so, picking up where we left off, we left off with mayor communications. Mayor LaChapelle, um, do you have any mayor communications this evening?
Um, yes, Madam President, I do. And I, okay, great. Thank you. Um, it's, um, okay, I got it. My apologies. Um, uh, yes, so, I, I, I have a, a quick, um, report out. So, one, um, our, our Sustainable Small Business Grant Program, um, opened for applications today. Um, applications can be online, or you can download a PDF. The application is at easthamptonchamber.org, um, and we, with Blueprint East Hampton Initiative and the money we received from Attorney General Healy, as well as money from Applied Mortgage, we combined efforts, uh, to have a grant program for our small businesses for, um, and, uh, Mo Bellevue at the Chamber of the ED graciously took on, um, as an in-kind benefit, just overseeing the application process. Uh, as of like midday, we had about 25 applications. So, I, please, um, check out the Chamber website, um, to, uh, see what the grant is all about. We have tried to make it as easy as possible to get the money, we want that money out of the account and into the hands of our small business community as fast as possible, and I just encourage everyone to get the word out, we're immature, everyone knows. Um, so, then, also, um, I, I, just a general, um, uh, statement around the website and moving things around in forms, it's been more clunky than usual, and we're working on that, uh, eh, as we speak, uh, as far as just cleaning up and organizing where our forms are on our, um, website. Also, the complaint form, which has already been improved, and my thanks goes to, um, cap, uh, Madam President Coniff, as well as Chief Alberti, um, just working through that complaint form and taking a good, hard look at it after I put it up, um, very polished. I also would thank, um, you know, it's all about you tonight, President, uh, President Coniff, for allowing the amendment to, um, uh, to the agenda, so I could, uh, put forward my appointment for fire chief. I really appreciate it. It's a very important position, um, and I'm, I'm grateful for, um, uh, the opportunity to put that through and hopefully leave that position open, um, in the, for the least amount of time, um, I think, and, uh, look forward to speaking more on behalf of the candidate at appointments, uh, committee. And with that, I think so.
Thank you, mayor. Anyone have any questions for the mayor? No? Okay. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, we will move on to reports of committees. Councillor Rist, Finance.
Yes, Madam President, I'm happy to report that the Finance Committee approved three to zero the CPA exemption for low income and low moderate income seniors. That exemption needs to go on the ballot. It was presented to us by councillor Kuzinski, which I compliment, whom I compliment greatly for putting this forward. Um, it was reviewed by the city attorney, and the question is ready to be put on the ballot. We felt, uh, as councillor Kuzinski, I'm going to ask him to go into detail on it, but we did not feel, one, that it would be, as the CPA committee also... the CPA exemption for low income and low moderate income seniors. That exemption needs to go on the ballot. It was presented to us by Counselor Kuzinski, which I compliment, whom I compliment greatly for putting this forward. It was reviewed by the city attorney and the question is ready to be put on the ballot. We felt, as Counselor Kuzinski, I'm going to ask him to go into detail on it, but we did not feel, one, that it would be, as the CPA Committee also felt, it would not cost the CPA a great deal of funds because we don't expect there are enough qualified people that it would cost a lot. Secondly, that it would not be a burden on the assessors or the principal assessor and that a lot of communities have already passed such a exemption. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Kuzinski to present it and make the motion as he did a great job on this. Thank you, JP.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. We have an opportunity before us to, I believe, fulfill many of the campaign promises I heard from many folks that we would do our very best to help those who are vulnerable in our community and those who find it very difficult to meet their financial obligations and help to meet the city's financial obligations, the payments, the taxes. This is an opportunity that we have to help those who are most in need. The measure before us will cover the low income individuals in their city, in our city, and the low and moderate income seniors. By that, I mean those seniors who have reached the age of 60 by January 1st of a given year. They would then, if they own their own domicile and occupy that space, be able to apply for and not having to pay the Community Preservation Act surcharge if they meet certain income guidelines. The measure was brought forward and we looked at all the communities in Western Massachusetts that have the CPA. There are 34 communities in Mass, in Western Massachusetts that have passed the CPA, 24 of which have elected to have this exemption. That is the low and moderate income seniors and low income individuals. The average tax bill in the city is $265,184 for the average single family tax bill in fiscal year 20. The, there are 4,050 single family parcels and the average single family tax is $4,710. We expect for those who are take advantage of this measure, the impact for the average single family home is going to be only $83.21. It is something that will be able to be reduced by certain individuals. And so I think when Counselor Risk, Risk says that this will not have a huge impact on the CPA, it shouldn't. There are currently about 63 individuals who have senior exemptions or low income exemptions, you know, within our system now. Not CPA exemptions, but tax exemptions. That base group all would be eligible for this surcharge reduction. The important thing I think to remember is if we vote for this, we're voting to put it on the ballot and that is to allow the public to make the decision come the next election, that is the November election. And it's important that we vote on the measure at this time because there are certain requirements to get the measure before the legislature, before the Secretary of State's office so it can be put onto the ballot as soon as possible. So with that, I will entertain any other questions on the matter or move right into the motion.
I'm not saying any questions, Counselor.
How about if you just do the ballot question part of it?
So the, essentially what we're looking at is a motion, a ballot question, and then a fair and concise summary, which will have to go on the ballot.
What, why don't you do?
I can summarize, I can summarize the fair and concise summary very, very easily. So let me make a motion. I move that the city vote to accept the exemption from property tax surcharge imposed under section 3E1 of chapter 44B of the general laws, the Community Preservation Act for the property owned and occupied as a domicile by a person who would qualify for low income housing or low or moderate income senior housing in the community as defined in the act, starting with taxes assessed for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021. If approved, the actions of the body shall be submitted for acceptance to the voters of the city or town at the next regular municipal or state election. The city or town clerk or state secretary shall place it on the ballot in the form of the following question. The ballot question will read, "To see if the city will vote to accept the exemption from the property tax surcharge imposed under section 3E1 of chapter 44B of the general laws, the Community Preservation Act, CPA, for the property owned and occupied as a domicile by a person who would qualify for low income housing or low or moderate income senior housing in the community as defined in the CPA, starting with taxes assessed for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021." Essentially, a yes vote will allow low income individuals or lower moderate income seniors to seek an exemption from the surcharge on his or her real property tax bill. A no vote will continue the surcharge on the real property tax of certain low income individuals or low or moderate income seniors. That was a short summarization of the fair and concise summary.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the exemption from property tax surcharge imposed under what JP just read. Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara? Salem Derby? Salem?
You can't find a mute button there.
Put your thumb up, Salem. There you are.
Yes.
All right.
My internet connection was unstable.
Okay. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you, JP.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to extend the Finance Committee's agenda item regarding a review of stipends and salaries of elected officials for 90 additional days.
Second.
Motion second to extend salaries and stipends 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara? Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Who did I start with? I guess that's it. All right.
Madam President, we will not have another Finance Committee meeting until more agenda items become available. I will deal with the stipends probably in August when I get more information. So that concludes my.
Counselor Rist, do we want to move the item of a gift account to the Finance Subcommittee, the acceptance of a gift account?
Typically, we do that in one meeting. If you do not want to do that, then we can do that.
That's fine.
I would, I will move to do it in one meeting because gifts are normally accepted unless. Let me do that right now then, to accept that gift from the barons. Does any counselor object to moving that this evening? Because it's a wonderful item. So let me get to it because I wasn't prepared.
Well, it also, there's, I think there's two things. There's the acceptance of the gift and then there is the creation of a donation account. Yes.
I think that's just two motions if that's all right with the council.
I just wanted to be clear about that. Yes, it is. Okay.
Can I do it in one motion, Barbara, accept the gift and create?
No, you should read, you should read each paper.
Okay, let me get to it. I wasn't ready. First of all, I make a motion to accept a gift, a donation of $7,500 from the Lindsay Baron LeBont and Todd Baron Applied Mortgage Company. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the gift from Lindsay Baron LeBont and Todd Baron from Applied Mortgage. Any further discussion? Counselor Kuzinski?
I just would like to thank them very much, Applied Mortgage, for being so active in the community and helping us out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Zera?
Just that I have the pleasure to know both Todd and Lindsay. They're exemplary people clearly, as well as exemplary business owners. And it's really kind of them to offer this, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Barbara?
Dan, I just want to clarify that I'm going to add the beginning part of that pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts general law to your motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great. JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes nine to zero. Dan, you want to do the creation of an account?
I have to ask you to do that, Peg, because I have the wrong agenda up. I don't have the amended agenda, so I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay.
Can someone else make that motion to?
JP, Bill Lynch? Do you happen to have the municipal donation account handy?
Yeah, I got it.
Motion, please?
Yeah, sure, I can make it. I'll make a motion to approve, to establish a municipal sustainability donation account pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter 44, section 53A. Approval is hereby given to establish this account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for relief funds for the city of East Hampton Small Businesses and labeled as Small Business Donation Account.
Motion is second to approve the establishment of a sustainability donation account. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yep.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Was that it? Motion passes. Oh, JP.
JP Kuzinski, yeah, okay.
Okay, great. Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you. All right, thus concludes Finance.
Thus concludes Finance.
All right. Public Safety, Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. We did not met yet. We're going to have a meeting July 13 at 6:30 by Zoom. As we're going to try to schedule that tonight so I can send that to everybody, including Barbara. I, we have a new, a new, something new for our agenda we have to add. And I want to make a motion to move this to our committee, the Williston Avenue pedestrian and bicycle improvement and temporary on-street parking ban.
Second.
Motion and a second to move the Williston Avenue pedestrian and bicycle improvements to the Property Committee. Any further discussion?
Public Safety.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, what did I say? Property?
Yeah.
Public Safety. I was reading Public Safety, but I said property. Public Safety. Okay, go ahead, Barbara. Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
That concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Appointments, Counselor Lynch?
Thank you, Madam President. Did you want to start with Kelly Ritchie for the Licensing Board with the concern we had?
Sure, yeah. So last time we met, I think it was, two weeks ago, we approved mayoral appointment of Kelly Ritchie to the Licensing Board, but that was an oversight as we know the mayor is recusing herself from anything with the Licensing Board. So we have resubmitted her name as a city council appointment. And I'm hoping that we can just go ahead and pass that since we passed through unanimously last time, if we can just go through the exercise of doing that motion as a city council appointment.
Without objection.
Okay.
You can do it. Go for it.
All right. Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve a city council appointment for Kelly Ritchie to the Licensing Board with a term expiration of June 6, 2026.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Kelly Ritchie to the Licensing Board. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak? And Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Counselor Lynch.
Thank you, Madam President. So we had two mayoral appointments that are on the agenda. We had met earlier tonight. Both of them passed three to zero. I'm going to go through a quick summary on each one and then I'll make a motion individually on those. So we have Mitzi Alter for the Energy Advisory Committee as an associate member. And the, we reached out. I did not get in contact with her, but we looked at the email from the mayor that she had provided and there was enthusiastic interest in being an associate member. And she mentions that she wants to have the ultimate goal of becoming a board member so she can actually have a vote. Because as we know, associate members don't vote. They just attend and part of the discussion. So we felt that with her willingness to volunteer and be part of a committee, without that ability is pretty commendable in its, in itself. So we did pass it three to zero. And so I will make a motion to approve the appointment for Mitzi Alter to the Energy Advisory Committee Associate Member with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Mitzi Alter to the Energy Advisory Committee as an associate. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
All right, motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And so the next one was John Casey Douglas for the ECA Coordinating Committee. He was, there were supposed to be two appointments a couple of weeks ago and only the grant one was presented to the council. This was the follow-up one to become on the ECA Coordinating Committee. Just, this is really just the second part that we had a couple of weeks ago. He's extremely involved. Most of us know him. He's involved in the community. He's a business owner and extremely enthusiastic. I personally know Casey and he's, he's very energetic when it comes to the arts and very involved and wants to do a lot of good for the community and the, and the arts in the community. We did pass this three to zero and Casey came to our last meeting giving his, his support, you know, and answered a lot of questions the last time around. We did vote to approve him on the Grants Committee unanimously last time. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve John Casey Douglas to the ECA.
Second.
I think Bill froze there for a second. Motion and a second to approve John Casey Douglas to the ECA Coordinating Committee. Any discussion? Okay, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. So I have two appointments that I would like to make. One motion to move them to the committee. The first one is for, make a motion to move Kevin Monahan for East Hampton City Arts with a term expiration 12/31/2022, Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Right. Motion passes. Go ahead, Counselor Lynch.
Thank you, Madam President. So we had two mayoral appointments that are on the agenda. We had met earlier tonight. Both of them passed three to zero. I'm going to go through a quick summary on each one, and then I'll make a motion individually on those. So we have Mitzi Alter for the Energy Advisory Committee as an associate member, and we reached out, I did not get in contact with her, but we looked at the email from the mayor that she had provided, and there was enthusiastic interest in being an associate member, and she mentions that she wants to have the ultimate goal of becoming a board member so she can actually have a vote, because as we know, associate members don't vote, they just attend and part of the discussion. So we felt that with her willingness to volunteer and be part of a committee, without that ability is pretty commendable in itself. So we did pass it three to zero, and so I will make a motion to approve the appointment for Mitzi Alter to the Energy Advisory Committee Associate Member with a term expiration 1231, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Mitzi Alter to the Energy Advisory Committee as an associate member. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Right.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Counselor Lynch.
Thank you, Madam President. So we had two mayoral appointments that are on the agenda. We had met earlier tonight. Both of them passed three to zero. I'm going to go through a quick summary on each one, and then I'll make a motion individually on those. So we have Mitzi Alter for the Energy Advisory Committee as an associate member, and we reached out, I did not get in contact with her, but we looked at the email from the mayor that she had provided, and there was enthusiastic interest in being an associate member, and she mentions that she wants to have the ultimate goal of becoming a board member so she can actually have a vote, because as we know, associate members don't vote, they just attend and part of the discussion. So we felt that with her willingness to volunteer and be part of a committee, without that ability is pretty commendable in itself. So we did pass it three to zero, and so I will make a motion to approve the appointment for Mitzi Alter to the Energy Advisory Committee Associate Member with a term expiration 1231, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Mitzi Alter to the Energy Advisory Committee as an associate. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Right.
Motion passes. Okay, great. So I'm just going to move up our agenda. So we did last night talk about, because we have a joint public hearing for cannabis establishments and highway business zones, we did discuss that last night with the planner, and I just wanted to let people know that we have a joint public hearing with the planning board July 14 at 6:00 p.m. to continue that discussion.
What was that date again?
July 14. And so you'll notice that expiration date is July 14. So in the form of a motion, I would like to, I don't think we're going to need too much more than 30 days on that one, so let's just do 30 days.
Second.
Motion is second to extend 30 days, the cannabis establishment in HB zones. Any discussion? Go ahead, Barbara.
JP Kuzinski.
I will abstain.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Until I can just get one little thing clear with the Ethics Board about something in my household, I'm going to be abstaining from this as well.
Okay. Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Aye.
Bill.
Bill.
He looks frozen.
Yeah, he looks frozen.
I'll say he's yes. And Tom Peak.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
And Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
I will abstain.
Right. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. And so the last thing that I wanted to talk about was our proposed ordinance for the reduction and elimination of plastics. We are currently waiting for attorney review, and we would like to try to move this this summer, and I was thinking that I would set a public hearing for it on August, the first meeting of August. I just want to make sure, with Barbara, Barbara, do you feel comfortable with that if the attorney hasn't reviewed it yet, and there potentially could be some wording changes? Are we safe to set the public hearing for the first meeting in August?
I'd like to see a fresh copy of it, because I haven't seen anything recently, so I don't know if you've made any changes.
We haven't, I'll defer to Counselors Zaret, but we haven't made any substantial changes since the last time you saw her, I don't think, but I'll defer to Counselors Zaret.
It's been a long time, and I haven't, I would like to see one from your committee.
Counselor Zaret.
I will send one along to you, Barbara, but Chairman Derby, I'm just thinking, too, since we have another meeting this month, do you want to wait a couple weeks just to see if we hear anything more to set that?
I think that's the prudent approach, and that was what I was going to suggest. I just wanted to hear what Barbara thought about, you know, setting it without having the potential full language, so I'm fine to wait. Looks like Dan has his hand up. Counselor Rist.
Just a question, I would believe that the city attorney might make some changes, so that has to be advertised, once you guys agree with those changes, correct? I mean, you have to have the document as it's going to be voted on, the final version, so I believe you should wait until you get it and you guys approve it before you set the public hearing, unfortunately.
And I'm happy to do that. I just wanted to let people know that we are at the point where we're ready, and so what I'll do is I'll just hold off on that, just setting the public hearing, but we as a committee are ready for that, even if the language hasn't been fully vetted. And then just one last thing is the item, the engine brake ordinance, I need to request an extension, and I would ask Barbara if we could get that back on our committee agenda for the next one, just in case, because we'd like to follow up with some of the people. We kind of had a plan, and we were going to just check in, so if that could get put back on our committee agenda as well, that'd be great. And in the form of a motion, I would like to request a 90-day extension.
Second.
Motion second to extend engine brake ordinance proposal 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Craig Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
And Bill Lynch.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes nine to zero. And thus concludes. Thank you. Great, thank you. Counselor Derby, you have a weird thing going on with your microphone. I don't know what it is, but you kind of cut out every other word, but we got the gist of it, but it sounds like someone's tapping on your microphone while you're talking about it. Well, you sound like you're underwater, to me, so.
There we go.
You both sound fine to me.
So who knows? All right. Moving on, property, Counselor Zaret.
Does my microphone sound all right to you, President Coniff?
It sounds fabulous.
Thank you. So a couple things. I'm going to start with, unfortunately, with somewhat of a heavy heart, make a motion to remove without prejudice the request to inventory city-owned property. This, as you know, is an agenda item introduced by myself, I think over a year ago, and we have failed to make substantial progress on it. I think it still has merit, but I also feel that outside of the agenda, I myself can make progress on it and always reintroduce it when it's done. I think especially right now, where we are meeting via televisions, Zoom meetings, and there probably are a lot more pressing issues with the city in light of COVID and in light of racial injustice and in light of the economic impact of COVID, that this is something I could work on as a personal project, and I can certainly bring it back when I've completed more work on it. So again, the form of motion, I'd like to remove that agenda item without prejudice.
Second.
Motion second to remove the request to inventory city-owned property without prejudice. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Yes.
Any discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye. Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
And Bill Lynch.
Yes.
All right, motion passes nine to zero.
And thus concludes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Derby, you have a weird thing going on with your microphone, I don't know what it is, but you, you kinda cut out every other word, but we got the gist of it, but it's, it sounds like, it sounds like someone's tapping on your microphone while you're talking about it.
Well, you sound like you're underwater, to me, so.
There we go.
You both sound fine to me.
So who knows? All right, moving on, property, Counselor Zaret.
Does my microphone sound all right to you, President Coniff?
It sounds fabulous.
Thank you. So, a couple things, I'm gonna start with, unfortunately, with somewhat of a heavy heart, make a motion to remove without prejudice the request to inventory city-owned property. This, as you know, is an agenda item introduced by myself, I think over a year ago, and we have failed to make substantial progress on it. I think it still has merit, but I also feel that outside of the agenda, I myself can make progress on it and always reintroduce it when it's done. I think especially right now, where we are meeting via televisions, Zoom meetings, and there probably are a lot more pressing issues with the city in light of COVID and in light of racial injustice and in light of the economic impact of COVID, that this is something I could work on as a personal project, and I can certainly bring it back when I've completed more work on it. So, again, the form of motion, I'd like to remove that agenda item without prejudice.
Second.
Motion second to remove the request to inventory city-owned property without prejudice. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Bill Lynch.
Bill?
Bill?
He looks frozen.
Yeah, he looks frozen.
I'll say yes, and Tom Peak.
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Motion passes, we got you, Bill. Counselor Zaret?
Yes, thank you. Just as a quick note too, I have not heard from the park director or the park commission about when they might be meeting regarding permitting us to evaluate that site behind the cemetery for a potential site for a dog park. I will note, and I encourage you all to read the article in the Gazette, I think published yesterday about Amherst's progress, they did receive the full Stanton grant, and they're proceeding forward with construction between use of a grant and CPA funds, so that was yesterday, if you can't find it, let me know. I did also post it, it's posted on the Friends of the East Hampton Dog Park Facebook site. We will be discussing at our next meeting, the review discussing the process of discontinuance of Standis Street, and then we also have a new agenda item here, which I, in the form of a motion, I'd like to move to the property committee, which is new business item F, revised Eversource site agreement for Lovefield Street EV chargers. I don't know if Planner Bag wants to comment on this at all before we move forward with a full motion and voting. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, I, I don't need to comment, but I, we're, we're still aggressively trying to get the second set of electric vehicle charging stations in East Hampton, and we encountered a problem with the location behind the mills, so that was the previously approved location at 122 Pleasant Street, and so what, what we're sending to property is to revise that prior agreement and move the chargers to the Ferry Street Mass Works project that we have underway. On Lovefield Street, there are a new set of on-street parking spaces that are gonna get constructed, and it's kind of an ideal spot, and when we were bringing this last year, it didn't seem like the timeline was gonna work, but now with the problem and this timeline change, we, we think we can, you know, what the mayor often talks about is stacking some grants, so we can take our Eversource, you know, infrastructure funding with the, the, the funding that we got for the chargers and combine it with the Mass Works and get everything done all at once, so it's a really good opportunity.
Counselors there, oh, Mayor?
I've been called worse, sorry. That's good. So to speak to this, Planner Bag spoke right, right to the point, I, I would make around stacking grants, and also, while it seems that the, the chargers are kind of far out there and who would use them, remember, we've got, Building One of Ferry Street is near completion, if not, has its CO already, and there'll be stairs that go to the parking spots across, across the bike trail as well, then you'll see more buildings and more businesses, so there's a little disconnect of when the chargers would most likely be used, and also, I would like to thank Eversource because, and the help from the state, because we've had to ask for location change, we had to ask for a delay, and then an extension, and they were, they were good, good partners, and the planning department and the city engineers did a lot of dancing to, to get this done, so thank you to them as well.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Counselor Zaret?
So again, I'd like to make a motion to move that item to the property committee.
Right, second.
Motion second to move the EV charging station site agreement change to the property subcommittee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
And then, President Coniff, or perhaps our resident counselor emeritus, Rist, just to clarify, those two items, the Standis Street item and this, the Eversource, the EV charging station items, those just go to a council vote, they do not require public hearings, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kozinski, are you available next Tuesday at 5:00 PM, that's the 7th, for a property committee meeting? Perfect. So our next meeting, and I already confirmed with the other parties involved, our next meeting for the property committee will be Tuesday, the 7th of July, at 5:00 PM in Zoom. Are there any known conflicts with that, by the way, just to double check?
I don't know.
Okay, well, if there are, please let me know ASAP, and thus concludes.
All right, thank you, Counselor Zaret. Counselor Peak, rules in government relations.
Thank you, Madam President. We've been having a little bit of trouble meeting, but we're definitely actually gonna meet next week at 5:00 PM on Thursday, July 9th, and we're going to be, like I said we were going to the last time, two times I announced this, talking about the charter stuff. So, apologies for the inconvenience, but, you know, that'll be an interesting meeting, I'd encourage you to attend if you can. Since we have not met, I don't really have a lot of new stuff to talk about, but we were, as we discussed at the last meeting, Counselors there had requested that we reaffirm the gun violence resolution. We can send that to committee, but given that almost everyone here today voted on it unanimously last year, I was wondering if everyone would be okay with voting on that tonight in one meeting. I know that, sorry, Counselor Rist.
Counselor Rist.
Just wanna ask if there has been any changes from last year to this year.
Well, I think that Counselor Zaret made a couple changes, just sort of to update data and whatnot, that he was going to walk us through, so maybe we don't need to make the determination on whether or not it goes to committee until he sort of walks us through that, but I just want people to keep, keep that in their mind about whether they think that changes are substantial enough that we actually need to send it into committee and work them through. Does that make sense to everybody?
Sure. I don't think they are, I just wanted to know what they were.
Sure, well, yeah, like I said, that, that was the, you know, I spoke to Counselor Zaret earlier and about how to actually do this, and I thought was that I would, I would turn things over to him, he'd walk us through the proposed differences to the last one, and then, you know, and for what it's worth, we have, you know, obviously a council member who was not here last year, so there's, you know, we can discuss that, but then if everyone's okay with it, we could just vote on it, if there's a feeling that it needs to go back to rules, then that's fine too.
So why don't, Counselors there, why don't you walk us through it? We will ask if anyone has an objection to vote, and then we can put it in the form of a motion to approve it, if we don't have any objections.
Thank you, President Coniff, thank you, Chairperson Peak. You know, I think the most, there's been a lot of discussion about resolutions and what they accomplish or don't accomplish, and I think that when we pass these pieces of language, the power within them is what we end up doing with them, so if they end up leading to legislation, or if they end up leading to better work within our community, or if we reaffirm them, I think that gives them power, especially now that we have a new council member, Counselor Rothschild, I think there's an opportunity here to make sure that, that she too potentially believes in, in the wording and the resolution that we passed, I think that was last year. June is, or was, Gun Violence Awareness Month, and thank you very much to Mayor LaChapelle for renewing her pledge to, to join in with many other mayors in the country against gun violence and for gun safety, and again, as a throwback, thank you to Police Chief Alberti, who helped me form my decision to, to start this resolution in the first place, and of course, Every Town for Gun Safety and Moms Demand Action, who were big supporters of this in the past. I made a few changes, mostly just objective information about gun violence statistics that have occurred now in the last year, I think the original statistics were from 2018, and I updated those to reflect the statistics in 2019. In the light, in, in light of racial injustice that continues to happen, and certainly that was even more highlighted recently, especially with the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, I did include a language about the racial disparities of gun violence. You'll find that, it's, there's two asterisks next to it in the, in the body that says whereas black Americans are 10 times more likely than white Americans to be murdered with a gun. I thought that was very important, and probably should have been included originally, but certainly heightened in this time of appropriate, ongoing advocacy and loud voices around racial injustice in this country. Also, somewhat to that point, and these are discussions that we've already entered into in regards to community advocacy and around police policies, and I think the, the city's already kind of done this with adopting the eight can't wait principles, but also, within the resolution later on, I also included language that says collaborate with our police department to develop safe firearm policies, and that revolves around being thoughtful and making sure we have policies that appropriately allow for lethal use of force, but also create many steps in between to avoid it if necessary, and those are the only changes.
Does anyone have an objection to approving, reading out and making a motion to approve this resolution in this meeting? Seeing none, Counselors there, would you like to make a motion?
I would, and, and in the interest of brevity, President Coniff, I'm happy just to use the terminology reaffirm with the, with, and I can just list the two changes, if that's okay.
All right, would that work, Barbara?
Sure.
I'd love to read it again, but I also respect all of your time, so, okay.
Why don't you, maybe read some of the preamble and a couple of the wherashes, and then, you know, I'd like to get some of it into the record, and then you can reaffirm the remainder.
Absolutely, and then I'll, and, okay, I've got it, thank you, that's a great idea, I appreciate your, your input, President.
Put the whole resolution in the minutes, so.
As a, as a form of the motion, I'd like the, the city council of East Hampton to reaffirm the resolution for firearm safety and against gun violence. I will read up to the first addition here in the language. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and Americans are 20 times more likely to be murdered with guns than people in other developed countries, and whereas more than 150,000 students attending more than 170 primary and secondary schools have experienced a shooting on campus since the Columbine High School massacre in 1999, and whereas from Columbine to Virginia Tech to Sandy Hook to Parkland, the lives of hundreds of students and school employees have been lost to the plague of gun violence, and whereas our children have the need and the right to go to school in order to learn and grow, and they should be able to do so without fear, and whereas there were 417 mass shootings in 2019, and whereas there have been 517 deaths and 1,477 people injured from mass shootings in 2019, and this is some of the new language, whereas black Americans are 10 times more likely than white Americans to be murdered with a gun, and the resolution continues from there with the pre-established language. I will read the first, the first resolution. We therefore resolve that our local and state government representatives request the mayor to join Mayor Against Illegal Guns, to join over 1,000 and current former mayors committed to addressing gun violence, which we have done, encourage local law enforcement to use their role as community leaders, to educate the public about local gun violence patterns and to serve as advocates for measures that will have an impact, provide resources to educate the public on responsible gun storage and gun safety protocols, provide resources to educate the public on the Extreme Risk Protection Order Law as a tool to prevent gun violence, including reducing the risk of suicide by firearms, and this is also new language, collaborate with our police department to develop safe firearm policies. The remainder of the language is, as previously stated and passed, we further resolve to communicate, I'm sorry, this is, then, resolved this day, the 1st of July, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to reaffirm the resolution for firearm safety and against gun violence in the city of East Hampton. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you, Counselors there.
Thank you.
Counselor Peak? Back to.
Yes, thank you. Well, so that concludes for, for rules.
Well, you do have one that needs to be extended.
Oh, I, thank you. We got that needs to be extended.
Actually, you have two. You're right.
Sure.
Rule 11L and Charter Review Committee Discussion.
Okay, well, I think I can get those both out next time, so could I just get a 30-day extension on both Rule 11L and the Charter Review Committee Discussion?
Second.
Motion second to extend Council Rule 11L and Charter Review Commission, Committee Discussion. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
All right, well, thus concludes.
I just wanna make one comment related to rules and government relations, the senior volunteer work-off program, as it has formed a committee, and we had our first meeting on June 18th, so we have elected our chair, which will be Joe Bannas, who is on the COA Board, and we will be having our next meeting of the work-off, volunteer work-off program on July 16th at 6:00 PM. I just wanted to get that out there. Barbara, do we need to move that item into a separate, like we have with the ranked choice voting, create a line item for that committee?
I can, sure.
All right.
And speaking of ranked choice voting, if this is the right time.
Absolutely.
We, we met last week, and it was actually a really exciting meeting. What the chair of that committee, Dan Gilbert, did was actually look at the software that we would almost certainly be using, because it's the software that's compatible with our voting machines, and look at every option or parameter that you can select within their, their system, you know, so just in terms of how you count things and how it reads things in, and, you know, if it comes to something that's ambiguous, how it handles it, and we discussed each of those steps and came to, I would say, a sort of preliminary understanding of where we want to go. We have some questions for the vendor, but that really is, if the goal of the ordinance is to leave it so that there's, you know, there's no confusion on the part of the city, and there's no confusion on the part of any candidate about how that would actually work, I'd say we got a lot done. We made a lot of progress towards getting to that point where we can draft up an ordinance and move it forward, so, yeah, a lot of progress being done there. Next few months, I'm hoping we'll be able to get our answers on the remaining, like the outstanding questions from our vendor, and then start moving forward on actually getting something back to the council.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and our next meeting is July 16th at 6 o'clock.
That's right.
Peg, or, Tom, I had one question, so, the senior volunteer work-off program is still in rules, Peg, should that stay in rules?
No, well, it, it may come back to rules once we have, once the committee determines a recommendation, it may come back to rules with the recommendation, but for now, it's sitting in the ad hoc committee.
Right, so maybe you can talk about cleaning that up, Tom, at your meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Rist?
It is, for the first time, a true subcommittee of rules, so you might just, just a thought, you might just put below rules, subcommittee, and name it, and that'd be the agenda item, but it's still in rules, because it, just a thought, because I think it's kind of cool that we have to use the term Tom likes to use, very cool that we have a subcommittee.
That would work, I think that would work. Thank you, Counselor Rist. Okay, I think we have done new business, old business, and existing business. I will take a mo, seconds from a clean getaway. Counselor Kozinski.
I just would like, at this moment, to thank Counselor Derby for his starting the meeting with reminding everyone about the mask, and I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's really.
Motion is second to adjourn. Barbara?
Oh, I'm gonna start with you, Peg. Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful evening. Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Bye, thanks.